I have nothing further to do. Called this regularly scheduled meeting of the Philadelphia Port Commissioners Order. Would you please stand and show me some time. Legally, we do to the United States of America in the Republic for which fans, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all. When I was getting out of the car, getting out of the car to walk up here, I instinctively, you know, running a little bit late, reached for a mask. You know, hey, I think two and a half years of coming to this building, that's what I think I need to be doing next. So, as we go into a moment of silence here, appreciate that we're both beyond that moment, but also, you know, it was on the radio when I broke in that we've lost almost a million Americans to COVID. It's hard to get your head around. So, if you think of all those folks who've lost folks and everyone else who's having a hard time here in our town, let's take a moment of silence. Thank you so much. Agenda before you? Thoughts, comments, questions?
Question to approve it for today.
A second then, Mayor.
Motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate if I say aye.
Aye.
Any votes nay, motion carries, we have agenda. First item on the agenda is public comment. We have two public comment periods at every meeting for those who might be new in the audience tonight. You could speak for about three minutes, five minutes if you're representing a group. We'd like you to, you know, tell your name and where you live, up to sell. We do have one person signed up. Brad?
Yep.
Hi, Dr.
Don't have to sign up. If you want to go out for a bandy, you can figure out what's in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Board. Appreciate this opportunity to speak in front of you this evening. First, I want you to know that I live on David Lane, which is the road adjacent to the new Wawa that we're going to speak to tonight. I know that I'm not naive enough to think that nothing will be built on that property. It is commercial, it's a prime, a prime real estate right now, especially now that the target is renovating the old Kmart. I also believe that Wawa is a done deal. Planning Commission's already approved it, and I think this is more of a formality going through this process this evening. However, I do hope that you consider some of the concerns that myself and a lot of the residents on David or Orville Court, as well as the 250 residents within Wright Shores have with respect to execution of their plan. Wawa, I believe, have already dismissed our concerns based on what I said at the Planning Commission. This proposal in front of us will affect the homeowners on Ford Street, which is David Lane, Fifth Street, and Orville Court, in addition to most everyone in Wright Shores, totally in almost 250 residents. And for those of you who are not familiar with the area, such as the Wawa folks, a subdivision with 250 residents is quite large. It may not be large in other areas, but it's quite large for the island. Wawa is not terrible. I'm very familiar with it. I grew up in Pennsylvania. I'm familiar with Wawa when they first started. My parents still live there. I travel through Virginia and Maryland and into Pennsylvania regularly. Stop at Wawa's all the time. Don't have a problem with Wawa. And they claim to be community friendly and a good neighbor, and I believe that. But however, it's a perfect time for them to walk the walk and for the city to hold them accountable. Lights and noise. A 24/7 business proposes many challenges, and lights and noise are only two of them. We're already going to feel the impact from traffic. That's something that we're going to have to deal with. There's nothing that can be done with that, especially since the curb cut was denied. The proposed plan provides a six-foot vinyl fence along the west side of their property. A vinyl fence will provide no barrier from noise, lights, or anything else. Furthermore, a vinyl fence does not work well in the outer banks, nor does a wooden one if not maintained. I suggested at the Planning Commission that Wawa look at something along the lines of what's behind the Lowe's and the Publix for an entire length of the project, from Ford Street to Fifth Street, because Orville's going to be just as, Orville Court's going to be just as impacted as David Lane will be, because now the traffic's going to cut through behind the Truist Bank. And this fence is something more substantial and provides a barrier from noise, lights, trespassers, trash, and it can withstand the outer banks' weather. The proven design is already located behind Lowe's and Publix, and it's been there for over 12 years. Been through a couple hurricanes and some substantial storms. I believe that if a vinyl fence was put up last week, we'd be repairing it this week after the last several days of the wind that we have, a continuous wind coming out the ocean. The planners that established the various property zones back in the 70s could not have imagined the Kill Devil Hills and the Outer Banks overall would look like it does today, or they would have established buffers between commercial property and residential properties. That is why we are working with, this is what we're working with today. So I hope Wawa reconsiders their plan and goes that extra step to be the good neighbor and one that cares about their community so that it doesn't appear to be just a sales slogan. It was very discouraging to hear one of their executives representing them at the planning meeting that they would rather repair the vinyl fence annually than do what is right. This makes no business sense, nor does it do anything for public relations. I have other things to say, but I'm going to save it for the second public comment period. Thank you very much for having me.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Lynn Trisha, and I live on Orville Court right by David Lane. And I just, and maybe I don't know everything about the situation, but Orville Court already floods as-is when we get heavy rains. We really depend on the retention pond that is behind currently the Truist Bank. We're concerned that when the cut-through goes in there, they're going to reduce the size of the retention pond, and now our properties are going to flood more than they already do. Again, I don't understand everything about what's going on, but I did read something of concern saying that the Wawa property is going to be elevated and that they can't accommodate all of this storm water. I don't understand why they can't accommodate their storm water with a rain garden or something of that nature. Also makes me concerned that they're going to raise their lots some, so now we have an even larger storm issue, or storm water issue. Thank you for your concern.
Thank you. Thank you, Board, for letting me speak. My name's Jason Newman, and I'm a resident of David Lane, and that's adjacent to the Wawa project, obviously. I'm also the owner of the one-man show Handyman Services out of Kill Devil Hills. So what I want to speak to is the details of the fence solution that's been proposed because I had direct experience with it already. So, I've been handy since I was a kid. Originally wanted to be an architect, paid my way through college as a draftsman. I went on to a career as a program manager building data centers across the country for two decades, and my last position was as a superintendent at a general contractor. So, I've been around building a lot. I've drawn the drawings, I've read the specs, so I can certainly go through a fence design and see what the problems are. I don't know everything about construction, but I do have a reasonably good idea of how buildings go together and to read the blueprints and the specs, as I said. So, to speak right to the fence design flaw that I see, it's typically, the system is typically sold down here, utilizes posts that only go into the ground 18 inches versus the typical 24 that we see kind of everywhere else. So that leaves a six-foot tall solid panel with less structural support than needed, making it vulnerable to the strong winds and soft sand substrate, leading to early failure. Vinyl fencing seems to have an accepted lifespan here of about six months before major maintenance or replacement is required, according to the long-term residents who have hired. During that time, the fence panels are found to shift dramatically and angle sharply or dangerously to 45 degrees or more. See pics below. I'm going to leave this with you all for reference. We've got a lot of pictures in the back of this. So, the most successful solution I've found is to cut the, is to one, cut the fence down from six feet to four feet, to cut new custom slots on the post to receive the bottom rails at a higher location. That allows the post to be dropped 18 inches in the ground, I'm sorry, 36 inches in the ground instead of 18 inches. I've added a concrete form tube and an additional bag of concrete for a total of 100 pounds of concrete per post, and these posts will still shift a little bit. So clearly, the extent of these corrective measures indicates the system is not designed for outer banks' conditions. So for example, a client hired me to dismantle her vinyl fence and remove and reset half of the fence post. After that proved ineffective, they hired me to remove the fencing again and cut it down to four feet as described. Another client with another type of project, I noticed had a new good-looking wood fence installed, and I asked them about it, and they said that they tried the six-foot vinyl panels and were so frustrated by its performance that they finally gave up and had it replaced. Also, while recycling their fencing material at the solid waste transfer station here down the street, the staff there remarked that yet another stack of vinyl fencing was coming in to fill the bend. Curious, I asked the same staff, myself, some days later, and they confirmed saying, oh yeah, this stuff comes in all the time. While troubleshooting my client's vinyl fence issue, I spoke with a manufacturer of Freedom Outdoor Living and the local Lowe's where it was purchased about best practices for installing the system. I pointed out to both that the installation instructions were not sufficient, detailed, and they were in fact inaccurate, and in no way took into consideration the local conditions. They simply described, seeking the post, quote, "two-year specified frost line," end quote, which is typical around the country, of course, but it further goes on to suggest that filling the bottom of the post hole with, quote, "filler" so as to make up the difference between 36 inches at the frost line and the bottom, at the bottom of the hole and the bottom of the post itself, which can't reach the bottom of the post hole. So that leads to a non-integrated structural concrete solution at the bottom of the post. So, the recommended 24-inch depth in the manufacturer's installation manual, which I have here for you, is erroneous as the post itself only allowed an 18-inch insertion because of the location of the bottom rail. So I advised the manufacturer's technical support crew, and they were typically non-committal in their responses. So, a system's performance in outer banks clearly the direct result of these three things. Faulty design leading to the post's inability to reach a sufficient depth to provide the system's needed structural support, the high winds experienced in outer banks, and the soft substrate. So, to speak to Wawa's proposed solution to these six-foot panels, I would offer that I understand that they cast it off the criticisms while absolutely acknowledging its defect by promising to repair it every year. My response to that is, good luck finding a contractor down here to do it. My clients chose my services out of sheer desperation because no contractor would touch it, not even her building, her house owner, and even the fencing contractors walked away. She had no other choice. So, Wawa's inadequate fencing solution would have to be maintained on an ongoing basis and reset at least once a year or more depending on the conditions. So, their fencing proposal will prove inadequate from day one, and their dismissive promise to maintain the fence system they already admit is faulty and shouldn't be taken seriously. Thank you, and who can I get this to?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I'm going to change the tone a little bit. I came here tonight to listen to a discussion on long-term housing, essential long-term housing, and stuff that had been involved in for 20 years. And finally, I see alternatives being brought up to all the towns and the county. Looking back, I can say Kill Devil Hills has been a leader in that. I mean, you have more multifamily housing than in any of the other towns. Teacher housing projects were good. Sometimes it's not popular, but it's not popular yet, sometimes we need it. I know the Chamber of Commerce and the business owners and the Outer Banks Hospital and school teachers and COA will all thank you for it if we can at least put a dent in what we're doing for housing. I know there was a project behind Walgreens. It may not be the perfect project, but it's a great transition between residential and commercial. So we've got something in between that would work, and we've got to work with this. Now, the draft I looked at, if that is just a draft, is really good. I mean, I haven't let it, I got to read it three, four times before it sinks in, but I read it today, and I think it touches all the issues, the custom homes, multifamily, ADUs, which I think is one of the solutions if we can just get that going a little bit. Got to be done in the residential, low-impact residential areas. I spoke on that last year when you passed the ordinance. So, I want to thank you. I'll be interested in the discussion to see this follow through. Appreciate it.
Duke.
Thank you.
Duke, do you identify yourself?
I'm sorry?
You didn't, you didn't tell us your name.
I didn't tell you. Duke Kennedy Outer Banks Home Builders Association. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Yes, it'll be quick. I'm not a great speaker either. Like everyone else, thank you for the opportunity to come in here. I also, I'm Jeffrey Taylor, or I go by Alan, my middle name. Everyone knows me as Alan. But I have had my little piece of serenity in Kill Devil Hills right there on David Lane for 27 years. I really enjoyed it, and when I heard the property was up for sale, my stomach turned inside out. But I've accepted that something's going to go there at some point. Hoping it'd be something less dramatic, dramatic dynamic, but whatever it is, it is. But what would help would be, because we had that buffer of that maritime force all this time, and it's sadly going to go away. I wish it was protected like wetlands, but I guess not. But if it's coming, I think the classy thing to do for a classy company like Wawa is to be good to the residents there and be considerate of us, show a little respect, and build that wall. That's it.
Going once, going twice? You do have another opportunity for a public comment at the end of the meeting, as I mentioned earlier. Thanks to everyone who spoke. The next item on our agenda is response to public comment. I think our proceedings here today will speak to a lot of the things that folks brought up. I think everybody knows that there's a lengthy process where the staff goes back and forth to make sure the plan is following every rule that we have that have been built over the years to protect residents and to try to mitigate all of the negatives of those sort of conflicts that come with differing uses adjacent to each other. We will cover that as the meeting goes on. And what I was going to mention, the woman said something, what was it about? Oh, storm water. There are a lot of regulations about storm water, and there are models that tell you how many, the statistical 10-year, two-hour storm, how much rain falls, and all of that water, wherever it falls on the site, has to be contained on the site. So, they, this site plan is meeting all those specifications. Staff has reviewed it. Engineers have reviewed it. So, it's probably, you know, doing a better job of dealing with its own storm water than most residential properties, which don't have those requirements at all. Anything else from the board members of public comment? Ongoing business, I think we have been there. Super business, we have a site plan, imagine that. And you guys can present a little?
Sure. All right, so in front of you tonight, there is a site plan review for 1900 North Curleton Highway in Commercial Zone. This is a proposed convenience store and gas station by the name of Wawa. It includes eight gas pumps, a 6,000-square-foot convenience store, canopy, 52 parking spaces, two underground storage tanks, and associated site modifications. The proposed convenience store is a permitted use in the commercial zone. Attached to you will find a commercial site plan application, proposed site plan, owner authorization, reciprocal easement agreement, proposed architectural and floor plan of the convenience store, proposed architectural of the canopy, willingness to serve from KDH WWTP, and applicant's response to planning board comments. The applicant has addressed most of staff's initial technical review comments, however, the following conditions remain to be addressed. Planning sheet CS101, the revised proposed fence on the western property allowed to match the proposed buffer that has shown the landscaping plan. That was just really a drafting error, and they've, since that time, fixed that and the fence has extended. To hit on the fence comment from earlier, they have revised the vinyl fence to being a shadow box fence to accommodate some of the wind load and also some of the maintenance issues we do see with our vinyl fences. There's not a detail on that yet. We'll get that, you know, at the time of the building permitting. They'll actually have it, likely an engineering detail for how it's going to be constructed, and maybe some of those comments will be taken into consideration. And then there was some, two comments for the commercial building exterior, and that is the proposed roof shall have a minimum roof height of six feet measured from the top plate to the ridge, and then also the fourth street elevation does not meet the minimum glazing, in glazing facade calculations. Staff does recommend approval of the site plan with the above listed conditions, and similar to the fence comment, they have addressed the architectural comments. It's not in your packet, but they have addressed those, and they met those requirements easily.
Glazing change on the fourth street?
It did. I think it's just over 10% now.
Correct.
And then the main mansard roof is over six feet in height. So, they have addressed the comments, but yes, that's what we're looking for. Do recommend approval.
Steve, those folks from the team that?
Yep, the team is here, so I'm sure if they have any questions for you, they'd be happy to answer.
In case you are familiar with those terms, glazing is windows, and we have a lot of architectural requirements about how the roof has to look so that it fits the standards of the town. So, those are the things that were addressed. Shadow box fence is really common on the Outer Banks with panels that go in and out. A little bit of weight can get through, but it's good for blocking the view and blocking sound made of wood, not vinyl. Overall, the package that we've gotten is extremely thorough, you know, it's well engineered, it's got every detail you can think of, exactly how every post hole's going to be dug and where every piece of wire goes and all that sort of thing. So, while we want folks here in the audience, folks that live in the neighborhood, to know that, you know, we do have your best interests at heart, and we are doing our best for the community at all times. I think the first speaker mentioned that, you know, something's going to go there. And as far as folks that could develop it, you've definitely got a quality engineering team that put this package together. We look at them, we look at them all the time, and these guys go over it all the time. So, any other comments from board members?
Yeah, I would, I would urge the developer to look at the fence up by the Lowe's and, you know, try to, try to go one step further and help out with the buffering from the residents. I know it's not a requirement, but I would just urge you to take a look at that. The second question that I had was, there was discussion about, or comments about the retention pond. None of these retention ponds have been reduced, for example, at the bank site. That hadn't been reduced yet.
No, I mean, they're taking our, our storm or calculations into consideration when they're doing that. There'll be a, our design storm.
And there's an additional pond with the Wawa site.
Correct, and you'll see a lot of their, a lot of their storage on site is in their pervious pavement. But yeah, I mean, their, their design exceeds our design storm.
So it's an increase in retention pond area?
Correct, yeah. The proposed development doesn't reduce the neighboring site's ability to manage storm water either.
And I talked with a resident in that area specifically about the retention pond on the bank site, and he indicated that he had never seen it overflow. So, I feel confident that, you know, we're going to be fine with that as far as storm water. And other than urging them to take a second look at the wall and try and do a little bit more to help, the only other comment I would have is I have a desire to see us go to the planning department and possibly planning board for future sites where you have this type of situation to strengthen the buffering ordinances and come up with something a little bit different that would give us more of a sound barrier wall or something that we could have in our ordinance for future sites. I mean, we can't do anything with this because they need to ordinance. But we can certainly take a look at trying to do something for the future, and that's all, the only comments I have.
I'll chime in too. I agree with everything Commissioner Gray just said. You guys just heard your neighbors' concerns, and a precedent has been set in our town with other large retailers building kind of above and beyond sound walls to kind of insulate their neighbors from light, noise, et cetera. Strongly urge you guys, if there is a way to come back, take another look at this, we understand the proceedings today, but you know, it's nice to be good neighbors. And we've had a good history in our town of commercial, we've got retailers coming in and kind of doing those extra things to really make those relationships work. So if you can't take another look at that, we certainly would appreciate it.
I'd also like to jump in. I want to say that I have two homes in Wright Shores, so I have neighbors of yours, and if I lived on either David or Orville, I would be 100% as concerned as you. I'd be here, sitting here, pleading with the Board to do something. You know, we're, our hands are tied in a lot of ways. I mean, we need to look to the future to prevent anything like this from happening in the future. I also agree and would plead with Wawa to, to consider something, to be a good neighbor, to consider something more, because, you know, it is, even though it's within the ordinance, we're being told by our staff and everything is in line, and I trust that, the, you know, the idea of being the good neighbor is important to the community that you're rebuilding in. So, you know, I understand the concern. I would be as concerned. I would even tend to consider not approving it, but in that, in that, I'd like to see pressure applied to Wawa, to be honest, if we could. You know, I mean, we don't have a lot of leverage, and we do have jobs to follow the ordinances as well. So, you know, I certainly would be in the same spot you're in. I get it, and yet, you know, we have these commercial zones that are really, really close to properties like this and a whole number of roads, and there's going to be a back road that's going through to work with it, and that's kind of one of a kind, really. I mean, in my book, you know.
Appreciate it.
I haven't seen a lot like that on a commercial side. So that's, yeah, the whole thing is.
There are the properties.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's not been done, but I have not seen it on our side of Kill Devil Hills and our side. So, I just, I, I, I'm concerned as you are. If there was anything legally that I could do to help, I would. I just, again, you know, I think if all the Commissioners and the Mayors are asking, you know, for that, maybe it will matter. I don't know. But I hope it would, I hope it would, because it's important to at least have the enjoyment of your property, you know, not as affected. Obviously, you knew you were up against commercial property when you bought the property, you know, way back when. It's just that, this is, you're right, this is a grand, this is a grand property. This is a big gas station, this is big time, it's going to be busy, it's going to be 24/7, right? So that's, that's unlike a lot of properties, commercial properties. So you have to deal with that. And I just think it's kind of sad that we didn't, you know, kind of see this coming in some ways, like come up with an ordinance for that, like look ahead and plan for that, because a 24/7 business is different than a, you know, a 9/5 business. And yes, it was both commercial, but that's, you know, that's when people are sleeping. So I really, I really don't like the idea that this fence is insufficient as it is.
I would agree with the fence. I mean, I definitely echo everything that's been said up here. Cameron, can you, I really, you know, because storm water is another big thing to, can you maybe just speak to that, just since there seems to be a little, you know, just to clarify?
For the storm water?
Right. And, you know, the per, like it's, having a pervious surface is incredible, because that's incredible for. I mean, that is, that's an investment. It's very expensive. So I, that's, I really like that, and I think that's really important, and it's important for people to know how beneficial that is.
Yeah, so they, they definitely have above and beyond stormwater management system. They worked with our town engineer, Pete Berkhammer, you know, on some of the tactics that do work in our area. You'll see when you use pervious pavement, it acts as a huge stormwater basin that there is no maintenance except for cleaning the concrete so things don't drain into it. So, you've created this retention pond that's also a parking lot. A lot of places don't make the investment. They just build a parking lot with a basic retention pond and run the numbers and make it big enough so it doesn't overflow. But you've got all these things that are connected. You have pervious pavement, and then you have overflows in all those parking lots that go up into a basin. But you've got all these things that are connected. You have pervious pavement and then you have overflows in all those parking lots that go up into a basin. So if anything, yes, like the mayor said earlier, it certainly does not shed stormwater onto adjacent properties. It holds its own there. So does stormwater drain from other residential properties onto this property in the past? Probably so. But this site is not creating stormwater issues for somebody else. And that's definitely taken into consideration and something else to think about. They're doing a tremendous amount of stormwater work on Fourth Street and on 158, which is going to tie into our next project very well. You know, we're connecting our stormwater to the Durham Street project to alleviate some of that flooding. So the assistance of them doing this project, it's great timing for the town. We're getting great benefit of these folks who live on David Lane. Fourth Street floods right there in the belly of Wright when you turn onto it, you know, today, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, today, I'm sure. And I think you'll see with some of the designs that their team has done that in working with our public service department and town engineer, you'll see things will improve. So.
Yeah, that whole engineering, that intersection is going to be a major upgrade. It's going to bring it to the highest current standards with a turn lane and a nice deceleration lane off the bypass and two, the left and right turn lane going out, curb and gutter. Like you said, it's all designed so that the water flows where they want it to flow. And if I'm not mistaken, I think that the retention area that is there has a top of, I mean, seven feet, but the requirement is only six and change. So all those extra inches is above and beyond what is required.
Sure.
So it's a, you know, having done some of those calculations for properties of my own in the past, it's a significant amount of water that it can handle, more than most things around it.
And speaking of some of the buffering conversations, you know, they are building a fence, but something to consider is when the buffer reaches, you know, being a mature landscaping buffer, there's plantings from the fence towards the adjacent property owners. So when that comes a mature, you know, vegetation area, it's going to be a thick, you know, vegetative buffer. It won't be instant gratification, but over time, as long as it's maintained, it will grow. You know, you're having a mixture of trees and shrubs and as long as those are taken care of and irrigated and planted correctly.
And all that faces towards the neighborhood.
Towards the neighborhood. Yep. And that's part of the buffer requirement is that your landscaping has to be on the adjacent property owner's side for their sake.
Which reminded me of another thing I'll just mention again. No requirements. We've checked all the boxes. We appreciate it. You did excellent work when it comes to those other things we mentioned. We had another developer years ago and I knew there were some live oaks on the site and I don't know if there are in this case, but anywhere in that buffer that has an already existing tree, I know that when you do development, it's easy just to wipe it clean and just build it all from scratch. But there are any trees in that buffer, they soak up a lot of water and they would, and they're already tall. So if they're able to be saved, it's worth doing a little extra work to find out if you can mark a couple of trees to leave. And I know these guys will appreciate it. You get a lot of goodwill from the entire community for those kind of things. So, you know, like the board members have said, requirement, we know you spent a lot of money making it really, really nice. These couple of little extra things will buy you a whole lot of goodwill. I think you have a lot of fans in the community. I know a lot of people like Wawa. We like to call the Wawa up and just speak the OBX Wawa. Everybody I know stops there and I always run into people from the outer banks and say, "Pat Wawa." So we're all big fans.
I learned tonight talking to a gentleman, this is a person out of North Carolina.
Oh, wow. I didn't realize that. I didn't realize that. Yeah, I remember reading about Wawa 15 years ago and they only had a couple hundred stores and they got written up in Harvard Business Review for their innovative practices when it came to hiring and retention of employees and how well they treat everybody and celebrate their employees. It's, you know, a great company in a whole bunch of other ways that we are not discussing here tonight, but worth looking into. There's a lot of companies out there and they're of all different kinds and so far so good with Wawa. Hopefully it'll be a great neighbor to you guys and hopefully those improvements on the street will really make a difference in how it feels coming in and out of there. And I was going to mention about stormwater. You all were here for the last meeting, but we just had a big update on our stormwater plans townwide. And we have really talented engineers that have looked at every place that floods and it's dozens and dozens of places that flood in certain amounts of rain. And they've all been categorized and quantified and the solution's been plotted out and we are methodically, million dollars at a time every year, without borrowing any money or doing any bonds. We are paying as we go to do the most important drainage pieces first and keep moving through them. And we've been doing that for 20 years and we're really making progress. Again, it's not, you know, snap your fingers and happen right now, but we've always had an incredibly physically responsible team here. You know, select officials come in and out, but we've got folks that are under 10, 20, 30 years that really care and they've really done a great job of helping us craft long-term plans to slowly address all of the challenges we have with the additional rain that we're getting more and more rain as time goes on, for whatever reason that is. So I have been long-winded and I apologize, but.
One more comment. I want to thank everybody for coming out and, you know, letting us know what you think. And some things we can do and some we can't. So, but we thank you for coming out and letting us know.
Thank you for coming out and speaking and also for all the emails and letters and texts and phone calls. I've talked to some of you on the phone and, you know, we've gotten to know each other better, which is nice because we're all in this together. I told one of the gentlemen here that I lived on a nice quiet dead end street, which turned out to be a thoroughfare after the high school. Some of these things change as you go. Yeah. I bought my house for $70,000. Those things don't happen anymore. Time marches on, but I used to know on the school board, one of the big statistics that stuck out for me is Wade County. This is 10 years ago. Wade County had to build enough schools to house 5,000 more kids every single year. They get more new kids than we have in the county every year. So they think about growth and I realize even percentage wise, they're growing a lot faster than we are. We've nice to have growing at a nice steady pace. Been a little crazy here and everywhere lately, but we're hanging on. So it takes participation from the people and we're really glad to see you all out here today. Last call. Not a vote for a motion.
There, I would move that we approve the site plan new business item number one. 1900 North Road and Highway in the commercial zone, both convenience store and gas station as presented.
With the?
With the, yes, yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? A second. Ms. Ingram, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If you oppose, say may. Motion carries. I appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Just as a point of clarification, Commissioner Gray brought up having the planning staff look at the ordinance as it related to buffers between commercial zone and residential zones that would then go to the planning board and back to the board commissioners. I think Commissioner Windley echoed that. I'd just like to get a consensus from the board that that's the direction you'd like for us to go in.
And what I'm able is to have planning staff develop some sort of overview or something to possibly take to the planning board and then bring back to us.
Yes.
But actually to have staff do either that preliminary or control of all of us.
Right. I was just wanting to get a consensus from the board. Yes.
I echo that, but also even special idea if there was a business that is 24 hours a day, it's open 24 hours a day, there could be a special restriction for that because that, you know, that is unique, you know. We shouldn't gloss over that.
I don't disagree with it. It is not unique. I just don't know how, it may not remain that business forever.
Right.
So it might not remain of 24 hours.
Yeah.
But so we can look at how that could be worked or, you know, what could be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
We got a public comment at the end.
I agree and I'm planning on speaking again, but I think the Wawa folks are leaving. I just wish they would be able to hear additional comments that we have at the end of the meeting.
Hopefully they will hear you and stick around to hear that. That would be great. All right. That was new business number one. We're now on to number two. The discussion we reached earlier about possible zoning alternatives for incentivizing essential long-term housing. Meredith produced the memo, which was, thank you guys, was nicely done. Would you like to recap for the audience?
I will and I'll thank you for pointing out that I also pointed out in my memo that Codela Mills has been on the forefront of trying to create long-term housing and workforce housing. We have the highest multifamily density in Dare County. We've had the most multifamily houses, developments built in Dare County in the past five years and want to keep moving forward and providing for our essential housing. You'll notice that my memo does not say workforce housing. We have a workforce housing ordinance, which has an entirely different definition. So I have dubbed this essential long-term housing versus workforce housing. You'll see that the workforce housing ordinance was adopted in 2006. Board asked staff to come with some bullet points and ways to possibly promote essential housing. And I'll just go through them quickly and then I'm going to highlight one right this minute. In the residential low zone, staff would recommend allowing cluster homes with deed restrictions for long-term essential housing. When I say deed restrictions, I've talked to Casey about this. It's actually a restricted covenants. So when I say deed restrictions, I used the wrong word. He caught me later. It's a restricted covenants that would require that type of development. If it was to be built in the residential low zone, it would have a covenants that restricted it to long-term housing. Allowing accessory dwelling units, again, with a restrictive covenants for long-term essential housing, possibly looking at some incentives on lot covered setbacks or parking for that accessory dwelling unit. I will also point out that an accessory dwelling unit is a fully functional dwelling unit including sleeping, cooking and waste disposal. That does not encompass something that's a bedroom and a bathroom. It has to have all three to be an accessory dwelling unit. In the light industrial one and the light industrial two zone, we would like to recommend that the board direct staff to rewrite the workforce housing ordinance to include a long-term essential housing with restricted covenants rather than the workforce housing ordinance we have now that requires an application process. In the commercial, light industrial one and light industrial two, incentivize mixed-use developments, require some ideas where they require less parking, greater density, fee waivers with restricted covenants. Everywhere I say deed restriction, I mean restricted covenants. The other things that we would need to do is define long-term essential housing with a minimum timeframe and look at incentivizing the essential housing to make it appealing. Development incentives and Ontario grant incentives. At the last meeting, the board also heard from Mr. Goodrich, who withdrew his zoning amendment application and indicated a desire to work with staff on an essential long-term housing project. We have since met with him along with the town manager and went through what the bullets that I just went through with you. And the cottage port cluster home type of development seemed to appeal to the project he wants to do. He does have a large piece that's in the commercial zone that he can do whatever. But the cluster home development was something that. It could. And with that being said, and the board's desire to work towards something more rapidly, we did put in a very preliminary draft of a definition for long-term occupancy, which is greater than 31 days. I'm still working with Casey a little bit on the single tenant in perpetuity so that you don't get someone that moves in, stays a week and then Airbnb's it the other three weeks. Or rents it to Airbnb it because they only have to have it for a month. So we're working on a little bit of more safeguards in our definition. The short-term vacation occupancy would be less than 30 days. That is outlined by the North Carolina general statutes. And then we put in amendment to allow as a special use cluster homes in the residential low zone with a density of 12 units an acre, which is less than we allow in the commercial and ocean impact residential zone, which is appropriate. It also requires a slightly larger lot. You'd have to have one acre in the residential low zone. So the density would not be in conflict with our land use plan in the RL zone. It would be a higher density, but it would be single-family dwellings and because of the large size of the lot, it would not be as perceived negative impact on adjacent properties.
And would be negative impact with smaller?
The land's bigger, so you're not taking a 20,000 square foot lot and trying to fit six houses on it. It's got a little more space.
More of it's a little different.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And the last change that we made from the cluster homes that you see in the commercial and OIR is we reduced the house size to no less than 500 square feet, but no more than 1,500. In the commercial and OIR, the minimum size is 15.
And then that actually was all choice.
Yes. And this is again preliminary. If the board was interested in moving forward, this would also have a restricted covenants on any of this type of development in the residential low zone as a cluster home. And if the board's interested in this, we'll go and I'll keep working with Casey. We'll take it to the planning board, get their input on it and bring it back to the board for formal setting of public hearing. But we wanted to make sure that the board was in agreement with this type of amendment before we even started running up the blackboard.
That's fantastic.
And then we can continue to work on the other bullet points as directed by the board.
For the audience, this has been a number of months coming to this point because we've kicked around all sorts of different ideas to incentivize folks to build workforce housing and the ADU idea that you had where homeowners like yourself might be able to have a concession in order to build a small accessory dwelling on their property, which would help you pay your mortgage. But we'd only allow that if it was for long-term housing because that's our big need. It really needs another, it would be necessary.
And Cameron just reminded me something that didn't make this piece of paper, but we've been batting around, is creating a.
A use.
A use agreement for essential housing, kind of like our non-conversion agreement that, you know, if you build below base flood, you have to sign something saying, "I know I built below base flood" and then that gets recorded, the register of deeds. So every title search brings that up. So when someone has a full living space downstairs and they go, "I didn't know." Well, yeah, you did. It's right here. It's recorded. And we were looking at some sort of use agreement that whoever did this type of development would also have to sign and each owner would have to sign a use agreement acknowledging that they know that they bought an essential housing, which would then be recorded, which would go with the PIN number so that any subsequent future title searches, it would come up that it is a long-term essential housing by restricted covenants.
Don't mistake this for.
So we haven't, I haven't fleshed that out with Casey, but it's something that we looked at just as another layer of if we really want long-term housing, we've got to ensure legally that it's being used as long-term housing. Saying it and doing it are two very, very different things.
Takes lawyers to make sure everybody toes in the line.
Correct.
But as I was saying, we're really, this board, I'm really proud that over the past couple of, three years, we've taken on some really tough challenges, things about the big giant houses on the oceanfront, which are more too popular. But there didn't seem to be a lot we could do about it, but we were able to come up with cluster homes and cottage courts as alternatives that are economically viable for those huge lots that the price is baked in and they're building some of these for the first time, I think, in the next year. We're going to see some of the first sub 3,000 square foot houses that have been built on the oceanfront in 30 or less years, something like that. So we take that model of incentivizing, same with the fire suppression. And we worked on changing setbacks, but you can get your stuff back in trade for basically adding fire suppression. So we believe that all the large homes over 6,000 square feet will economically going to have fire suppression, even though we can't require it, even though there's no way to say you actually have to. We have economically incentivized it. In this way, we're trying to go about not using all the big federal programs about how you qualify for this and that or not really have government housing, but how can we incentivize housing that? but how can we incentivize housing that would be, have restrictive covenants so that it will always be used for the things that we need? You know, we know we have investment money coming into the town. How do we turn some of that money towards the needs that we have? And hopefully we can find an economic model that works to incentivize, I keep wanting to say deed restrictions too, taking on those covenants, which will, will not have it be its highest and best use financially, but it will have the benefits to the current owner, benefits to the person who's able to rent it and have a job, benefit all of the businesses that need to have workers, and there'll be a lot of, you know, virtuous cycle there that benefits the community in the long term. So these are the things we're thinking about. Meredith has done a great job of sort of encapsulating five or six of the best ideas over the, that we've had over the last year or two. And now I think we're going to move it towards staff so that we can be efficient with everybody's time and come up with ways that we can bring some things to the public to see what you think of them. And if they have the support of the public in this board, we can hopefully get those things going. So thanks for your hard work on that. Were there other comments from the board? I know we've talked about this a lot.
Just two from, from me. First, I'd like to thank Duke for recognizing the fact, as Meredith said, that Killalil Hills has done its due diligence all along. Doesn't mean you can't do a little more, and that's what we've tried to do. And thanks staff for, for coming up with this. Then also, I'd like to ask, we have Mr. Goodrich in the audience, if, if he has any comments that, that he would like to make. I'd be interested in hearing that.
My name's Eddie Goodrich, and the only thing I want to say is that staff did a wonderful job. The, um, the cluster homes are far superior to multifamily. And the density, what they came up with was something between the two and between single-family and multifamily. And again, it's far superior, far more livable, and I think it's, in the long run, the best move because the, the lifestyle of, it's a small house. It's a, it's an apartment-sized home, but detached in a single-family home, like a single-family home. So it's a far, it's a great move, and staff did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And I thank y'all.
Thank you. It makes a good point, you know, we have, we're fortunate to have a whole bunch of large residential lots in our town, fifteen thousand square feet and up. And we have restrictions. You have to have side yard setback, front yard setback, height restrictions. So you can only build so big of a house. But if you get creative, you can build a vacation-sized house, five, six bedrooms on a lot of those lots. Because the lots have gotten so valuable, this cluster home idea allows you to build a small house with less cost, less land associated with it. And I think that's the thing that's missing in our, our housing mix right now. So I think it has a lot of promise. So we're looking forward to seeing what's possible with that.
I'd just like to say that I think, I think it's, 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 the details are important, obviously. The length of time, I don't think is enough, you know? I know the lawyers, yeah, thirty days, that's
I was thinking sixty, it's like
Well, even in my opinion, but, but, you know, lawyers create these things, and lawyers, you know, also learn how to take them apart.
You heard it here first.
And, yeah, you know, that's, and, and that's, and that's why, you know, I am concerned about the ability to keep, you know, restrictions and restrictive covenants. We see these things, you know, start, and then they fall apart when lawyers figure out ways around them, people figure out ways around them. So
That's why I'd really like to do that.
Yeah, well, I won't be the one stopping it. I won't be the one stopping it. But I will say that, I will say that, you know, and it also concerns me that even though I, I know it is something and it's going to take a little, little somethings, you know, it's pretty insignificant. And so density, you know, for the sake of, of, of making our, you know, our dent a problem, you know, it is, is not going to solve very much at the same time. So we're going to sacrifice, you know, and make ourselves such a dense town as we already are, but even more dense of a town in, in, in considering that, you know, it's really not solving anything, you know, it's not solving any problems. I understand we're all responsible. You know, our town has done a lot. I, I'd like to see the other towns do more, to be honest. I'd like to see, you know, the county do more. But ultimately, you know, so I don't think Killalil Hills is responsible for all of it. And obviously, this will make a dent, but if it's not significant, then maybe it's not worth doing. So, you know, you know, a small dent, if it costs us to be a really uncomfortable and dense place to live, might not be a good choice, you know? I just ask everyone to consider that on the board because, you know, if it's worth doing, it's worth doing. But if it's not going to make, make much of a difference, it's probably not worth doing. So that's my position. That's my position. Yeah, the details, it's all about the details. I mean, this all, it sounds great, but, you know, it's going to come down to, you know, can we really restrict these things? I mean, make it sound like, oh, it's really, really easy, you know? De restriction, which is not even possible, but, you know, covenants, you know, these restrictive covenants are meant, are meant to also be broken. So, you know, but, so I'm skeptical, but that's what I do.
You need, you need to poke holes in these ideas and not be starry-eyed about it. It is a, it's a heavy lift. It's a tractable challenge that we've been facing for twenty years. It's really come to a head recently, and hopefully we can continue to take the leadership role and inspire some of the other towns to follow suit.
And I think just speaking to the density, I, so I have concerns about that too, obviously. It means environmentally, it's better to keep. But I think the cluster, I really like the idea of the cluster homes, if we can protect some of these things. And I think in terms of density, you're going to see density on those lots regardless because they're going to build a bigger house that can hold just as many people as the cluster homes. So what, what this does is it gives us the density with the benefit. So if we could think about that while we're, you know, because the developers are going to get, like Ben always says, the highest and best use. Well, the highest and best use to them is to put a six-bedroom rental, you know, weekly rental, then that's what they're going to do with the same amount, you know, potentially the same amount of density as we could get in
So you're trying to give them another alternative.
Right, right. So just pointing that out that we're probably going to get the density regardless. Like, it's going to come somehow, at least in terms of this specific.
With ADUs, I mean, until there's something to be created or we don't, you know, so.
Again, we're never, we're never, hopefully, we're never adding without having a benefit. And that's what we're saying, is that the restrictive covenants, then with the communities getting a multi-layer benefit. You know, we'll, we'll see what staff comes up with and
I think it should work sweet.
Yep.
I think we're at a good start here, and I want to thank staff. We've talked about this. We beat this, we got out of depth, not much candy left in there. And they've done a good job encapsulating our ideas of what we discussed and got our opinion. This is
We're at, so thank you all for, you know, really putting together the consent of the board. That means a lot.
Thanks for your
I appreciate it. I'll take that, pregnant pauses, time to move on.
Is there consensus to
We'll get a consensus out of that.
Just in the cluster home idea to the planning board?
Yes, we did.
We feel like we have consensus. We don't get it both, though.
No, not yet.
All right. Thank you for that. Looking forward to seeing what comes back. Next item on our agenda is committee reports.
I agree.
There's three.
I agree.
So we're gonna miss three? Sorry.
I'd like to give you a budget.
Yeah. Yeah, but looking down too quick.
Staff's worked hard on this too.
Yeah.
Yes, and the post-budget for the Killalil Hills fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three is going to be presented this evening. In accordance with the provisions in North Carolina General Statute one-five-nine, three, the governing board shall adopt the budget ordinance not earlier than ten days after the budget's presented, which is tonight, and no later than July one. Before adopting the budget ordinance, the board will need to hold a public hearing, at which time any person wishing to comment on the recommended budget may appear. And the hearing may be held at any time after the presentation, prior to or subsequent to the board's budget session. Typically, our boards have nailed the budget work session prior to the public hearing. And if that's your desire, then I would recommend we hold that work session Wednesday, May twenty-fifth at six P M., which is the date and time of our second meeting of the month. The budget public hearing could be scheduled for Monday, June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two at six P M. You can also adopt the budget that evening if so desired. And a motion would be in order this evening to schedule the budget work session and schedule the budget public hearing.
I'll make a motion to schedule the budget workshop Wednesday, May twenty-fifth, twenty-two at six P M. And the public hearing Monday, June thirteenth, twenty-two at six P M.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay? Question carries.
And as you, as you peruse it, if you have any questions, please give any, the department heads, assistant department heads, myself, or Charlene Allen, the assistant town manager, all happy to discuss it.
Another unusual year after two unusual years. Let's take a look.
Thank you.
Couple graphs. All right. Now, jump ahead. Committee, three.
No, I was referring to
Three items. If they had three committees, like, no.
How many of that busy?
Nothing's like that. So let's bring this to the mayor's agenda. I'm sorry, commissioner's agenda next, yes?
Yeah. I want to offer appreciation for a gentleman that was very instrumental in working with the town during our negotiations to get the high school here. He was recently passed, Liam Holland. You know, he was a very good friend to the town of Killalil Hills. And I just wanted to bring that up so that he could possibly, you know, say a prayer for his family, you know, getting through this tough time. He, he sure did add a lot. He was the superintendent when we did the negotiations, Debbie, you were called. And he always seemed to have a funny little anecdote that he would say and talk about whenever things got tough during the negotiations. So I just wanted to break his name up for that, and that's all I have there.
Would be a great, just keep the family
Just reminding everybody that tomorrow's election day, and be sure to get out, yeah, be sure to get out there. It's been a little turnout, actually, unfortunately.
And all we
Everybody's waiting for
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Three years of staying away from people in town. Only
Exactly, exactly.
Independence, you voted either
That's a good one. Independence, you voted either pick the primary, that's right.
It's up all the time. Pick your primaries.
It's called open primary state, where some, some states are closed. Yeah, North Carolina's open.
Forty percent of us.
About forty.
My agenda, I wanted to bring this proclamation to you. It's designated May twenty-third through the thirtieth as Beach Safety Week. Time of year when we think about all of our guests arriving over the bridge in greater and greater numbers. We know that they come here to create memories, and hopefully they will be safe as they're doing it. So I recommend approval of this proclamation, and I'll make that motion. A couple of seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor, please, if you may say aye.
Aye.
And question carries. Thank you for that. And be safe out there to all of our lifeguards and officers as they get into the high season. Here they come. It is, it is. So town managers didn't know, but you have a town attorney who's doing this?
Okay, I didn't, I didn't, that's what I thought. We'll get into golf cart type next week. But we do have some things prepared on that. I will touch too, just for the board's information when considering workforce housing, we didn't go into a lot of, oh, I'm sorry, essential, long-term housing. Let me get that, get that cemented in my brain here. I think that was a very eloquent term that, that Meredith came up with. I do. But any event, the restrictive covenant ordeal, I will note that one thing, and maybe BJ this helps a little bit with some of your concerns, but one thing the restrictive covenants are going to allow us to do, if you think about any code, any ordinance that we pass, we're hoping that people follow that way. You know, enforcement is, a lot of the times, a really big issue. We're a complaint-driven town, where municipalities are. So, you know, we certainly depend on our citizens to inform us in certain cases when our, when our ordinances are being violated. Now, with the restrictive covenant, what that creates, the extra barrier there is that it's going to exist on the entire development. And one thing that North Carolina law says about restrictive covenants is that any one owner or any one interested party to that covenant, not just the town in that case, it will be a tri-party covenant where we can enforce it if we discover it through, you know, essentially some injunctive action with our Superior Court, but also the owners within the, the cluster, even if it's one owner, the tenants then can enforce. That's the idea. They could potentially enforce against other, other tenants. So, you know, that's not the, the case or even possible with our ordinances. Naturally, we're the only ones that can enforce those. So, you know, it, it's all we can do. Let's just say it that way in terms of trying to put some kind of protective measure in place. But I will think, I do think that along those lines, that that would, it would have a little bit more teeth than, than maybe what, what some would think. I ain't saying, but fifty percent of my litigation right now is probably restrictive covenants because of all the HOAs that we have. I've got one right now in duck over whether or not somebody can go from sound to sea on golf cart. So I, it, it's very common in litigation. So, you know, again, it, it's the right under North Carolina law, and it is something I think that, that we could put, implement, and enforce.
As we become more and more and more of a digital society, these documents are easier and easier to access, you gotta go to the courthouse, all that sort of thing, and now they're
Well, that constructive notice is a lot. That means, that means a whole lot. Absolutely. So the recordation, the register of deeds will do a whole lot of good. I agree.
And the same goes for enforcement about short-term rentals is it used to be, you didn't know who was doing what, but nowadays it's consolidated into a few platforms and all the technology's getting better and better to monitor. And next, it's pretty aggressive about it and combing through it, but I think even that'll become more automated, so we'll find out if anybody is doing what they're not supposed to in the wrong spot.
Well, it's tailoring it to make sure it doesn't allow for loopholes. That's, it's not easy.
No, no, it's not. Thank God you got a good attorney.
That's your servers, they'll be there. All right. Okay, so that was the town attorney's agenda. We have a consent agenda as well.
We did, yes, sir. Three items. First one's a minutes for the April twenty-second, twenty-seventh, excuse me, twenty-twenty-two meeting, March twenty-twenty-two monthly report, three budget amendments. The first one is to appropriate funds for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, transfer to the beach nourishment capital reserve fund for special obligation fund funding coverage schedule. Number seventeen, to appropriate funds for the purchase of diesel and unlevered fuel. And number eighteen is to increase dumpster sales and associated expenses due to an increase in demand of dumpsters. Staff recommends approval of consent agenda as presented, and a motion would be in order.
So
Second.
Pushing the second. Any further discussion? Quick question.
Yes.
What's the cost of the individual eight hundred and something dollars?
It's in that budget.
I don't see how many it actually is, but, all right.
I said it's in your budget.
So we'll look at that later. Uh, just dealing with that one. They do not last for
No.
It's cost plus a seventy-five dollar administrative fee. So it's all cost plus seventy-five dollar administrative.
Just pass it along. I wrote, gotta buy a bunch every year. I don't have to do that either. All right. So that was comment on consent agenda. Forgot where I was again. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Yep, consent agenda.
Thank you.
This is what you've been waiting for, one This is what you've been waiting for, one more type of public comment. This is all recorded, so send the link to anybody you like.
Great. Well, thank you again, mayor and commissioners, for allowing me to speak. I, I have three quick points real quick before I get into what I was gonna say, based on comments that we heard earlier. First, the shadow box fence that Wawa proposed in Looz, the vinyl fence, and I appreciate their flexibility. It's still six foot high. Most of the houses, in fact, all the houses on David Lane are raised eight to twelve feet, and the bedrooms are on the backside of the house, right adjacent to the west one, the west side of their property. So the bedrooms are basically ten feet in the air, looking right above the fence, looking right into where Wawa's gonna put their stores. So that's just something else to think about, why a six-foot fence doesn't work. And the shadow box fence is basically board-on-board. So it, it alleviates the wind problem, but now it opens it up to, for noise. So now, so you trade one for the other, and we're still six foot high. So it's basically having Wawa in your bedroom, so just kind of imagine that. The other one is, and Mr. Ray, I apologize if I say something wrong, but we talked about retention ponds, and it said it was, none of them were reduced. Unless something's changed since the planning meeting. The retention pond that's, that's presently adjacent to the bank, which is part of the bank lot, is being reduced by fifty-one-hundred, fifty-one-fifty cubic feet because they're putting the road from Fifth Street onto the Wawa property. And they have to, and, and what I assume is happening is they're, they're taking part of that retention pond to replenish the parking areas that they're taking out to allow that passage of the vehicles from Fifth Street to the Wawa property. So retention pond is getting smaller. I think it was oversized to begin with, but it is getting smaller than what we have today. And if, Mr. Gray, I apologize as well. I don't know who would say that it doesn't flood. If you look at a retention pond, you probably wouldn't even know there was one there because it's so filled in, and it hasn't been maintained at all. So you can't even tell there's a retention pond there unless you look at a plot map. Uh, Wawa's putting in a retention pond adjacent to it, but it is being reduced, so. And the vegetation, I, I love the idea of the, of the exist, using some of the existing vegetations there, the live oaks that are along there, because planting new vegetation in, in the sand, I mean, I'll never live long enough to see it block anything of David Lane. And those are for the, for the ones that actually make it. Because with the wind and sand moving, it's very difficult to grow large vegetation down here. All right, so now I'll get to where I want to do. I pulled something from Wawa's website. It's called defining our social purpose. And this is right from their site. Since we first started, Wawa has always been a place to go for more than just food, coffee, and fuel. We believe we play a bigger, larger role in the lives of those we serve that transcends our commitment to convenience and satisfaction. Our core purpose is to go beyond filling the customers' orders to fulfilling lives every day. It's what drives us, and that's all we're asking for today. It, what shapes our decisions, our goals, and our people. And it's reflected in our countless stories and actions that represents Wawa's social purpose. This is the Wawa way. So with that, in closing, I ask one more time specifically to the folks representing Wawa. Don't change your plan for me, or the residents of White Shores, all two-hundred-and-fifty of them, or the city of Killdellah Hills, or Wawa itself. Even though each and could and would benefit highly from a change in direction with respect to the subject fence. Do it because it's the right thing to do, something which Wawa says in their own statements on their website. And I appreciate, again, your time. I appreciate you guys' time here. Like I said earlier, I have nothing against Wawa. I love Wawa. I go there all the time. I just don't want it in my bedroom without some sort of barrier between us. That's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening. My name is Mike Sherbin. I also live on Orville Court. And I wanted to thank you for your, the opportunity to speak. And also thank you guys for coming back. I know you didn't have to stay, so I appreciate that. And most of the meeting didn't pertain to you, so I appreciate it. The, I wanted to echo what he said about the shadow box fence. Because obviously, if you stand here and look at a shadow box fence, it's great, but if you move over here, it does nothing. So a, a, you know, Lowe's or Publics type of fence, we go a long way in making, you know, allowing us to use our properties the way that we've been using them for, for years. The other thing I wanted to do is mention, or I guess see if someone could speak to the amount of traffic that's gonna be, I guess, being on Orville Court, that light on Fifth Street is already, especially in the summertime. It's almost impossible for people to turn into the bank and come out of the bank without, when there's people waiting for a red light. And so I wanted to see how that was being dealt with, whether it's gonna be a, a right turn lane that allows people at, at least make a right instead of just stacking up when, you know, maybe there's one person turning left blocking everyone else trying to make a, a right there. And we were talking about adding probably thousands of cars that'll be coming in and out of that parking lot. Because we've all seen what Wawa's are like, and I, I love Wawa too, but they are busy. And you mentioned the Chesapeake one there. Saturday on, during, to the summer, it's crazy there, so. And I assume that the one down here will be just like that. But, and I also wanted to see, on this site plan, I, I think originally it said that the, the right turn into their parking lot from one-fifty-eight was not approved. But on the plan that I looked at last night, there was a right turn into, into the parking lot from one-fifty-eight as well as, maybe it was an outdated.
Just from, so forth, yeah.
Just from, just from fourth and from beating, uh, from Truist, I guess.
Right.
Okay.
There's a decelerate on one-fifty-eight that goes into Fourth Street.
Uh, maybe, maybe I read it wrong, man.
Okay. Should make that intersection a lot safer than.
Right, no, okay, okay. Maybe I, maybe I looked at that as a, an entrance. All right, thank you for your.
Thank you.
I just had one more question. I don't know if any thought has been taken to on Fifth Street by the Truist Bank. It gets really busy there with traffic, so it's gonna get more traffic. There's currently not a sidewalk there. And I'm not saying you need a sidewalk all the way down Fifth Street, but if there was a sidewalk along Truist Bank, because then when all the cars pile up, you could just hop onto the sidewalk and at least not get, be getting hit as you're trying to walk to the crosswalk. I don't know if that's thought of or included in the plan.
Go through, right?
No.
Yeah.
No. We just have a sidewalk on one-fifty-eight. It stops, but we have a crosswalk at one-fifty-eight, which we really appreciate. And so now, when we walk up Fifth Street, and there's gonna be a line of cars all the way to enter Wawa, and then there's gonna be cars coming out of Wawa trying to turn, now we're trying to walk right where all this traffic is. So if some consideration could be made for maybe having a sidewalk along the Truist Bank on Fifth Street.
On Fifth, I see.
That way, and, and not past the residential homes that start right on Orville, but just so that you could hop on the sidewalk and then not be endangered of getting hit of people trying to get in and out on, on Fifth. So if.
Like how Publix has it, just until the end of Publix.
Yeah, yes, yeah. She said, that doesn't exist currently, and with the increase of traffic, it may be something to think about. So thank you for your time.
Dana Harris, Assistant Chief Police, Killdellah Hills. I just wanted to remind everybody, this is the last part of National Police Memorial Week. To do, keeping in mind there are fallen officers that have fallen, and that's what this week is about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanna, it went out in our newsletter, but the First Flight High School HOSA, which is the Health and Human Services Club, is doing a humanitarian essential needs drive for Ukraine. And we have boxes here at Town Hall for soap, toothbrush, shampoo. It'll be here till the twenty-fifth, so if you have time, you're coming to vote tomorrow. Bring a few, bring a few essentials and put them in the box for the First Flight High School. They've done, they, they work really hard on it, and we're trying to help them out.
One last call for public comment. Nobody? I will close public comment. We now have one more chance for response to public comment.
The young lady spoke about the sidewalk. How about if we asked Commissioner Michael Boye if his committee will take that up at their, their next meeting and investigate?
For the benefit of everybody, his committee is, deals with bike and pedestrian streets and all that sort of thing. We have lots of big plans, what we want to do in five years and ten years, and kind of an order of which sidewalks would happen next. You know, we're looking at where the need is greatest, and this is definitely gonna shuffle around some of those priorities. So as things change, I know your committee will.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know the street very well, and I think, you know, yes, there's, there's already things scheduled. Three years projects scheduled, there's one on deck, and there's one on double deck. But for sure, we can look at trying to speed up, especially if it's a smaller area. You know, it's a smaller area of, just, just through the bank there, maybe. Sure. I mean, it's gonna change everything. I agree. I actually, you know, it's in terms of maybe respond to public comment. Just real quick. I, I, I agree, and I'm curious how, how different it's gonna be with traffic. It's, it's, I mean, it's such a popular business, and it's such a, you know, quiet spot. You know, and it's true, the, you know, so I am, I'm concerned about traffic on Fifth Street. It's already bad enough. Backs up, that light takes forever. I imagine they speed that up at some, or, or there's some turning lane. I don't know. What goes into traffic engineering of that, you know, when, when a new business comes in and lights, you know, timed differently? Or, you know, I mean, because.
That's a D, that's a function of NCDOT.
So you have no control of that? Or they, did they analyze it? They analyzed the backups?
They did, they did some traffic studies for getting the deceleration line. They had to work with DOT.
And the, the distance between lights wasn't great enough between Fifth Street and Third Street for there to be a light there? The DOT did not support it.
Okay, not light there, but what about the timing of lights? Because does that change?
That, that'll base off their traffic flow if they do the study.
So it will, if it remains the same, I mean, boy, it backs up like it is. I can imagine it would be like, you won't even be able to pull out.
I've read that DOT is moving in the direction of AI for a long time, where it takes in a ton of data more than any human.
To be covered down by.
I always optimize this.
Hey, go through a rail.
Just like everybody else. So it's kind of amazing what.
But what happens? I, I mean, I'm, I'm curious. What happens when a new business comes in? Is there, is there, is there a request that's be done to look at that, a DOT? Or they just do it on their own, on a motion, or?
DOT, DOT monitors all of the stoplights in all of Deer County on a regular basis, and does look at the traffic flow, it does look at the surrounding businesses, and they also try to do timing so that they're not, in the summertime, a lot of the ones in the winter are on trips. And then, so if you come to a side street and you trip it, it'll change. But in the summertime, they reduce the number of lights that are trips so that they're on timers so that you have the potential, if you catch one green light, you got the potential of catching six or seven, depending on if you go the right speed, if you're, you know, there's no traffic, if you were doing forty-five. That's the way that they, they try to do it, but they do, do their, their monitoring, and they do, they definitely recognize new businesses. They did, they did it First Street and, and at Landing when the lights went in and Lowe's and Publix went in. Those, those lights changed dramatically.
Yes, okay, okay.
I don't know if anybody remembers seeing a First Street light before Publix went in, but you could sit there for three, four minutes.
Yes. Okay, that's good to know. I didn't know that.
And they have counters underneath their trips, so they know how many cars have passed over it. So they, 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 they got really good engineers that know how to do that.
My neighborhood brings in the Martin Street, which, there was a time when I got there where there was no CBS and there was no, uh, Walgreens. But yeah, a couple very busy, busy businesses, and the worry was greater than the impact in those cases. I know it's a lot to be apprehensive about. Any other response to public comment?
One quick thing. I really liked Lynn's idea of the sidewalk on Fifth Street just for that property. Truist, you know, with the Dare Center, we put up a sidewalk on one-fifty-eight. They kind of went in with us on that. Truist may be interested in making investment there as well.
Good point.
And I think we should probably approach them and see if they'd be willing to. Partner or flopper or something along those lines.
The Visitors Bureau helped us look at sidewalks and all that sort of thing, too, so we have options. A great idea.
Just one other comment. I've got three or four pages in the budget. Good job. I like that.
I have, I have no doubt it's gonna be a good read. Looking forward to getting into it. So last, just to recap it again, we're really great, great to see all you out here. I had to be out of these circumstances, but know that we're always here at your disposal, and all of our phone numbers are online. And you can give me a call or text me or any of these folks up here. Staff as well are always here to help if you have questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, so hopefully I'll take all your good suggestions to heart, and I'm looking forward to another good neighbor. Just stuff getting built this year. With that, motion to adjourn. What a great idea. Second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're adjourned. Good job.